I hereby call the tenth day of the fifth regular session to order. May we all bow our heads for a moment of silent prayer. Okay, Chief Clerk, please call the roll.
Senator Orton?
Yes.
Senator Christian? Senator Figuerre? Senator Figuerre? Senator Conlin?
Yes.
For a sweet and beautiful.
Senator Conlin?
Aye.
Senator Conlin?
Myself, my person.
Senator Conlin? Vice Speaker Moses, oh, I'm sorry. All right, let's go down. Senator Net? Senator Palick?
Yes.
Senator Perman? Senator Romolo? Senator Rusma? Senator Wally?
Yes.
Speaker Seminon? Acting Speaker Moses?
Yes.
Mrs. Speaker, eleven members are present.
Thank you, Chief Clerk. Next item.
Oh, that's right. Yet the resolution, not local pay. Ah, I'm sorry. For a session, Speaker.
Item four, Mrs. Speaker, reading of the Journal.
Short recess. Some of it here. Yes, uh...
Yeah.
Let's go back. Congress is back in session. Floor Leader? You have the floor.
Speaker, and good morning to you and all honorable members, as well as our staff, and everyone who's tuning to our remote sessions, everywhere they may be. And again, Mrs. Speaker, I move to dispense with the reading of the Journal.
Second. It's been moved and seconded that Congress dispensed with the reading of the Journal. There are no objections. We will vote all those in favor of the said motion. Say aye. All opposed, say nay. Motion carried. Congress is now dispensed with the reading of the Journal. Next item, Chief Clerk.
Yet the resolution.
Hi, Mr. Acting Speaker. Item five, presidential communications. There are none.
Next item.
Item six, have some Supreme Court communications. Also none. Item seven, member communications. None also, Mr. Speaker.
Next item.
Item eight, departmental communications under receipt of number twenty-one dash seventy-seven.
Sign that. Next item.
Item nine, agency or governmental authority communications. None, Mrs. Speaker.
Next item.
State communication on item ten. There are none.
Next item.
Item eleven, state Supreme Court communications. Also none.
Next item.
Item twelve, municipal or town communications. None. And item thirteen, foreign government communications. None, Mrs. Speaker.
Order of the day.
Uh, Mrs. Speaker, for the order of the day on item fourteen, standing committee reports. There are none.
Next item.
Item fifteen, special committee report. Also none. Item sixteen, assignment of measures and communications. We have referral sheet number twenty-one dash one oh two.
Chairman and members, please take note. Next item.
Item seventeen, unfinished business. None, Mrs. Speaker.
Eighteen, bill calendar.
Speaker.
Chairman Perman, you have the floor.
Thank you very much. Good morning to you and members and all of those that are observing our session this morning. Mrs. Speaker, we'd like to entertain a motion. Motion to defer action on all the second reading bill except for Congress Bill twenty-one dash three oh two. Still move.
Second. It's been moved and seconded that Congress defer all bills on the bill calendar except for CB number twenty-one dash three oh two. Discussion? Any discussion?
I think we all agree.
Question?
If there is no objection, we will vote on the said motion. All those in favor of the said motion, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. Motion carried. All bills on the bill calendar are deferred to tomorrow's session except for CB number twenty-one dash three oh two. Chief Clerk, first bill.
Uh, Mrs. Speaker, we have the budget bill. Uh, CB number twenty-one dash three oh two for second and final reading. This is a bill to, for an act to appropriate sixty-five million, seven hundred sixty thousand, four hundred sixty-seven dollars from the General Fund of the Federated States of Micronesia for the fiscal year ending September thirty, twenty twenty-one, to provide funding for the operations of all branches of the national government of the Federated States of Micronesia, its agencies, various programs, grants, subsidies, and contributions into capital and human resources development and for other purposes.
Chairman Figuerre, you have the floor.
Thank you. Thank you, Mrs. Speaker. I move for the passage of Congress Bill twenty-one dash, number twenty-one dash three oh two on second and final reading.
Yeah, good.
Again, it's been moved and seconded that Congress passed CB number twenty-one dash three oh two on second and final reading.
Speaker.
Chairman Net, you have the floor.
Thank you, Speaker. I have a floor amendment to offer and because of its length, I ask Chief Clerk to please read.
Chief Clerk, please read the amendment.
Yeah, Mrs. Speaker, we do have an amendment by Chairman Deontier Net for the bill twenty-one dash three oh two. His amendment is to read as follows. On item one, on page twenty-nine, line two, item lowercase h, delete two million dollars, or two million, and insert zero in lieu thereof. Item two, staff will adjust the amounts accordingly.
Chairman Net, care to move?
I shall move.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded that the written amendment offered by Chairman Net be adopted. Any discussion?
Question?
Chairman Rusma, you have the floor.
Thank you very much, Mr. Speaker. I am again going to be falling behind with, from the rest of the pack here. As it, my, I need time to understand what this is attempting to do. I never heard of an amendment to a bill that said the staff will take care of this. This is the first time, and I know the time has changed. I'm sorry that I'm old and used to being organized and understand how we do business in Congress. And this is, this must be the new normal, where you include in the amendment for staff to make any changes to the bill or an amendment is being attempted to hear. Uh, I hope what we're doing, and if the TLC said it's okay, I still want to challenge that okay from TLC. Uh, when you change a bill, and to me, changing the amount in the bill is significant. It cannot be just for the staff to, to make the technical correction. Uh, it should be an amendment to the title and the bill. And for the amendment itself, I'm trying to, I know we have COVID nineteen, and I know airplanes are not coming in, but we're talking about FY twenty-one budget. It goes all the way to September thirty, a year from, uh, the September thirty. So why, what would be the need for this proposed amendment here? To do what with the two million that is being taken out from the budget? If I may, maybe you'll understand what is being done here.
Thank you, Chairman.
Speaker, your, uh, mic is still muted in my view from here. Thank you.
Thank you, Chairman Rusma. Uh, Chairman Net or Figuerre care to...
Let me start, and Figuerre will iron it out. Well, first of all, we haven't gotten or heard any report from the states on the use of this fund for the past so many years. Second, if we, if there is really need for it, we can put it back in November or so. Thank you.
Chairman Figuerre, would you like to also join in?
Uh, Chairman, uh, Speaker.
Chairman Golin?
Thank you very much. Is it, are we in recess?
No.
We're in session.
Can we, short recess, please, Speaker.
Short recess. The... Congress is back in session. We are still in discussion of CB number twenty-one dash three oh two, CD one. Is back in session. We are still in discussion of CB number 21-302 CD1. Discussion?
Question.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded that debate be closed. All those in favor of the said motion say aye.
Aye.
All opposed say nay. Motion carried. Discussion is now closed. We will vote now by delegation. Chief Clerk, please call the roll.
Matam, matam, matam. Por la deble, por la deble, cosay.
State of Chuck. Chairman Orismo.
Yes, yes.
State of Pompe, Chairman Praman.
Aye.
State of Goshai, Chairman Wali. Chairman Wali?
Yes.
State of Viap, Chairman Orusmo.
Yes, yes, yes. I am the floor to Chairman Fugere. Why are you smiling?
Chairman Fugere?
He's muted.
Yes. I'm crying. That's why I'm smiling.
Yeah, Mr. Speaker, all the four states voted in affirmative.
With that, Congress has passed CB number 21-302 CD1. Next bill, Chief Clerk.
There are none, Mr. Speaker.
Mr. Speaker.
Chairman Orusmo, you have the floor.
Thank you very much, Mr. Speaker. I move that Congress stand in recess until tomorrow at 10 o'clock.
Second.
Mr. Speaker, there is a resolution before Congress dedicated to Mr. Sedan. Do we want to do it today? There is a church service, and Father Ken was hoping we would take care of this resolution today. Mr. Speaker.
Short recess. Subject to call of the chair.
Thank you.
Let's go back. Chairman Orusmo.
Thank you very much, Mr. Speaker. I... Mr. Speaker, I moved my motion to recess until tomorrow. We rescinded.
There are no objection. There are no objection, and the motion is withdrawn. Chief Clerk, any more bills?
There are none, Mr. Speaker.
Next item.
Resolution calendar. There are none. You can move on.
Mr. Speaker.
Vice Chairman Christian, you have the floor.
Thank you very much, Mr. Speaker. On behalf of all of us, I move that Congress Resolution 213203, which has been printed and distributed to members, be placed on the resolution calendar for action.
It's been moved and seconded that Congress place Resolution number 21-203 on today's resolution calendar. If there are no objections, we will vote on the said motion. All those in favor of placing CR number 21-203 on today's calendar for action, say aye.
Second.
Aye.
All opposed say nay. Motion carried. CR number 21-203 is now placed on today's calendar for action. Chief Clerk.
Sure recess, please. Sure recess.
Short recess. Subject to call of the chair.
Yeah, Mr. Speaker, we have motion of resolution 21-203 for adoption, and this is a resolution expressing the sincere condolences and sadness of the Congress of the Federated States of Mankinesia to the family of the late former EFSM Senator Peter Sedan at his passing in July 2020.
Mr. Speaker.
Chairman, Vice Chairman Christian, you have the floor.
I so move for the adoption of the resolution.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded that Congress pass CR number 21-203. Discussion?
Mr. Speaker, point of privilege.
State your point.
Thank you very much, Mr. Speaker. I beg the indulgence of members to allow me to say my own personal feelings on this issue before we go on to the resolution. Mr. Speaker and members, it goes like this. Peter Sedan, a friend of ours, lost his life at sea to forest of his lifelong work. As we are wont to rationalize the events that befall us for the sake of making sense of God's mysterious biddings and His final call for our mortal lives, let us all do so in the good memories of Peter. In doing so, our best marks must be upon his stewardship of his family, his wife, their children. Let us herald that he did well in this, his closest and most sacred undertaking, an undertaking of love and care that ought in our minds to overshadow all his accomplishments and so completely compensate for any fault or weakness we may know or suspect of his. It is preached that only God should and can judge us. Yet in man's moment of weakness to remain true, we cast our judgment on our neighbors, his weakness, his strength, his success, his failures, his aderents, and his deviates. But after all, we return to the Word and reaffirm our faith in God's benevolence of forgiveness as taught us in the prayer of faith. As a man and a friend, I judge and declare that Peter was a good man, a good provider, a good husband and father, a dear friend, and may rest in eternal peace in God's heavenly seas. I thank the members for allowing me to do that, and, Mr. Speaker, I'd like to offer some amendments to the resolution before Congress.
Please proceed.
First of all, on page three, on page one, line three, correct the spelling of MISPA. Line five, assure that Joseph High School is what the name of the school is. And line... Line seven, it should be the University of Hawaii Hilo campus. And on page two, line six, I believe that the son's name is Stanley, not Standee. So that should be corrected also. And then, Mr. Speaker, between line four and five, after, whereas Peter Sedan was CEO of the National Fisheries Corporation from 2011 to 2020, insert the following. Whereas Peter Sedan was indeed devoted to the development of EFSM Fisheries, and whereas Peter Sedan should here to fore be remembered as a forefather of EFSM commercial fisheries development, and whereas Peter Sedan was conferred the traditional Pompe title of Nanawan Tolinkatau. And that's... Those are the proposed amendments I'd like to insert into the resolution. I so move, Mr. Speaker.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded that the oral amendments to the said resolution be adopted. Any... If there are no objections, we will vote on the said amendment. All those in favor say aye. All opposed say nay. Motion carried. The offered oral amendments by Vice Chairman Christian are adopted. We now have CR number 21-203 CD1. Any more discussion?
Question.
If there are none, we will vote on the adoption of CR number 21-203 CD1. All those in favor of the said motion say aye.
Aye.
All opposed say nay. Motion carried. CR number 21-203 is adopted by Congress. Next resolution, Chief Clerk.
Mr. Speaker.
Vice Chairman Christian.
May I ask that the Chief Clerk and her staff quickly, what do you call, endorse the resolution for delivery earliest today.
Thank you. Noted. Chief Clerk, any more resolution?
Speaker.
Chairman Praman.
Thank you very much, Speaker. I so move that we stand in recess till 10 a.m. tomorrow.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded that Congress stands in recess till 10 a.m. true time tomorrow. Any objection? If none, we will vote. All those in favor of the said motion say aye. All opposed say nay. Motion carried. Congress stands in recess until 10 a.m. tomorrow.